Ten or twelve maps back from townships as roads they want reclaimed and the rest of them just refuse to have it done. That's the background there.
So typically, the ones that don't have the background down are the ones that complain about the clay job. I mean, they kind of go hand in hand, is that?
Sure. I guess, yeah, I kind of, it's normally the big windrows. See, in this thing, this this thing kind of reduces the size of the windrow. Dragging their farm machinery across them big windrows, and I get it, I could see that would be an issue. So we do try and pull it, the ones that don't uh have the reclaiming done, we do try and pull the shoulders in with the motor grader. But at the same time, your windrows get bigger and we try not to get too much at the time. So. Sure, for sure, um, the issue if they don't do that reclaiming is they're trying to rob gravel from that shoulder and it makes that little ditch or whatever you want to call it on the edge of the road gutter looking thing. Cause they're trying to steal material to make a crown. So that's typically what happens.
And then that little gutter holds water.
Right.
Which isn't good.
Oh, not good at all. And it's difficult because you, I mean, you need the material to fill the potholes, whatever, little washboards, whatever, so you have to rob it from that trough. I'm sure not everybody understands that, but that's kind of how it works. Uh, the biggest issue with people not wanting it done is the black dirt that brings up. And in many cases, there's kind of a clay base and that not always, if you're going through a swamp or something like that, it is not good material out there then, but most of the time that clay does help or that black dirt does act as clay. Help firm up the loose gravel. But there's a point where you can get too much too, I get it. I think my, my opinion is if we make it mandatory, um, well, it would be ugly for some townships. And for years, probably fifteen years, we've been offering it whether they want it done or not.
Roads that I've seen that have been reclaimed are definitely in better condition.
So we agree, we do it to all our roads, but again, we've been doing it every year, so I mean, we don't have the black dirt issue like some of the ones that have never done it. Yep, very good question. That makes a lot. And when they bring their maps in, we typically ask them if they're doing any reclaiming and they said they use all kinds of uh language to describe the mess that it makes. So we just don't push it anymore when they get to that point.
Sure, everybody's offered the option.
Yep.
A lot of them choose not to.
Right.
Okay. Does that kind of answer the question that you had, Blaine?
Yeah, I mean, I guess if I have people ask me why it's not getting done, it's not because we're giving them the option.
Yeah.
Yep, that's correct.
Absolutely, so.
And even the ones that don't do it, we try and get it with the motor grader and it's not as effective, as effective because of the big windrows, but it helps.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, no problem.
Anything else for Kevin today?
Paul might go over, but.
Okay.
It's just to add to that Peggy Bridge discussion, it's sixty-four feet long and the estimate we submitted for total project costs for the um, bridge funds a year ago, I guess it was in January of twenty-three, was one point four million to replace it. So just to, for ballpark on that, I don't know what the prices compare this year versus last year on that size and structure, but they haven't really gone down. Um, Ramsey County four box, there's something to pave um where they left that gravel last year, so that'll, that'll happen sometime in the spring here. Um, Strata is doing that as a subcontractor to Gladen was the prime. And then Ramsey three and left overlay that bids Thursday one o'clock. And we got the usual players are listed as on the plan holders list, Knife River, Mail, Strata, RJ Zabrow and Central Specialties are the primes that we I don't know if we get bids from all of them, but I've gotten questions from Knife River and Mail, so we'll hopefully get a couple bids at least. And then IBIs on the plan holders list as a sub for the mailing probably, so we'll have more information Thursday. So thank you. Any questions on those?
Any questions for Paul? Hearing none, thank you, appreciate it.
One more thing I should add, um, the contracts for in twenty twenty-two when our culverts washed out those CER projects, we still do not have the contracts back from the state yet. And we don't have the contracts for the two townships that got funding through that program, so we're waiting for contracts from the state for all those projects. Uh, when they talk to them, they say it's uh legal folks that are trying to get the wording how it should be. So just an update there.
Kevin, I got one more question for you. And last year we talked a little bit about putting maybe a thin coat of gravel on four north of seventeen, is that still possible?
That was one of the projects we bid, I just did the first like there's nine miles on that stretch and I did the first five miles on this year's bid, so next year we'll do that, the last four. And we typically put five hundred yards down, I bid six hundred yards on that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Kevin? Okay. Anybody else have any other questions for Kevin? If not, uh, thank you, appreciate the update. Sheriff Lang?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, just a couple of things before I get in my quest for uh out of state travel. Uh, in your package, you'll see there's news release, it's going to be going out pertaining to our K nine Raptor. Uh, a grant was applied for, for healthcare for the K nine. And we're one of the handful of departments that were granted that healthcare. So we're having healthcare paid for the dog uh free of charge. And we've also got a stab resistant and bulletproof vest for the dog through the same company and no cost to us. Uh, with the canine, I mean, we're talking about the canine. Uh, the company that we chose to put the cage in the car has ordered the cage, so we're just waiting for it to come in. And I did happen to secure funding for the cage through another entity. They're going to pay for it in full, so the county won't be responsible for that. So, which is good, there was a good chunk of money that came, came to us, so it's a good deal. Uh, we're in the process of writing some other grants uh for a catch suit, uh, so when they train the dog for bites and stuff, the suit is used for the catch guy. And it's about two thousand dollars with the suit and it's looking pretty promising that we may get that all paid for too. But we're just looking for a volunteer, so if any one of you want to come volunteer, we'll make sure the suit fits you. So that's just kind of the update to what we got going on so far. Uh, I'm here to request approval for going to the annual conference of M O C I C, which is mid state's organized crime information center. Uh, they hold a conference every year. A lot of law enforcement agencies from across the United States go to it and they got some very good information. I looked at it, there's a lot of leadership stuff that I'd like to attend and there's some new things that are coming out as far as training law enforcement officers, I think would be beneficial for us to at least explore and see what's out there. It's in August twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth. Uh, the initial cost for the conference, I believe, is a hundred and ninety-five dollars and I'd have to have four nights to stay and it's going to be Deadwood, South Dakota.
Request for out of state travel for four days to Deadwood, South Dakota for, what was the name of the conference again?
It's called the M O C I C Annual Conference and Training Session.
M O C.
I C.
I C. Anybody have any questions for Sheriff Lang? On that? Do we have a motion to approve the request for out of state travel?
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second to approve out of state travel request. Is just yourself, Sheriff?
Just myself.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
That's all I had unless you got something for me. Raptor.
Raptor. So nothing else, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you and your staff for everything they do. Uh, unfinished business, we have floodplain administration, we had asked the townships to get uh their um, resolutions back to the county by the twenty-fifth of March. We've heard back from probably a third, maybe. Um, that have signed, sign those resolutions. Do you have any updates, Daniel, from that?
Uh, regarding the updates from the townships, I do not, uh, I occasionally get uh, or I occasionally have conversations, uh, some townships I think are still trickling in occasionally. Uh, as far as the actual floodplain administration goes, we were able to get a first draft of that ordinance uh out. I believe that was sent out to the townships last week. Um, I guess at this point, we uh, in my conversations with the emergency manager, Chris Jaeger, um, the state's attorney's office and emergency management feel that we should kind of keep pressing forward as far as uh finalizing what that floodplain management uh ordinance looks like. Um, I, I guess everybody's big concern is how do we actually make sure this is being enforced? Um, there's a lot of costs associated with that that I don't think anybody really has a solid idea of where that's going to come from, so I, I guess that it's up to the commission where that where, where you want it to land as far as, is that going to be under emergency management? It's, it's a, it's a zoning ordinance, uh, so maybe that should go under planning and zoning. Uh, uh, there's all sorts of different ways that it can go, but we're getting to the point where some decisions need to be made by the commission and the townships as far as how we're going to make sure that that uh federal flood insurance is going to be uh available to residents of Ramsey County.
Okay. I think there's been a lot of questions uh from townships, um, questioning whether or not they can if they give up that any type of rights, that they can get those back. And um, in what I've been trying to tell them is that yes, they can. And maybe we should make it clearer through state's attorney's office, similar to the resolutions that they, you know, either adopting everything themselves, uh, giving part of it back to the county, um, and keeping building zoning on their own or doing everything relinquish everything to the county. And maybe there's one final one that we can, uh, you know, just a simple resolution that we've changed our mind. Um, i- if that would ease some of their concerns, I think if we had something simple and, you know, that they could sign off on and.
If, if the commission feels that having an extra resolution drafted for the township's benefit of they want to relinquish whatever permissions they've granted, that's certainly something we can do. Uh, the townships can at any point come to the commission and relinquish or take back any powers or rights they've given to the county. Uh, it's not a quick process, it's not about just saying, I want that back, it's, there's some processes that need to be gone, gone through, but it can always be undone through a process, uh, as long as everybody's on the same page. I don't think the commission's in the business of keeping powers that people want to take back. It's just a matter of making your choices known so that we can work through that process.
A- absolutely, and hey, and maybe having that in, in writing for them. Uh, you know, outlining the process for them, uh, so as commissions change, as township officers change, they can feel comfortable with. And you know, that's something that's been recorded in the auditor's office as well, that um, you know, they have that opportunity to keep within their township records of this is the process that we need to follow to change back, yeah, if so needed.
Yeah, uh, that is certainly something that uh the state's attorney's office will look into. Uh, I don't think that should be an overly complicated
Right.
resolution to draft. Uh, to kind of add to uh that whole conversation. Uh, I, I believe no way that uh North Dakota law lands at the moment. If townships remain silent and don't enforce their own ordinances or decide not to uh interact with the county, uh, those uh, that authority to for planning and zoning does fall back to the county if the township isn't exercising it. And so, uh, even if we only have a third of townships actually participating, uh, we will be able to enforce those ordinances uh across the entire county uh to those that aren't saying one way or the other and essentially just avoiding the issue.
Okay. And well, we don't necessarily want to make that known. We, we would prefer the signed document, signed resolution stating one way or the other from that township. So we can have that recorded within the auditor's office and we can make that available to the state.
Right.
Something that the state has asked and indicated that they had won from us.
Both uh D W R for the state and I believe FEMA representatives would much prefer to have everybody actually participating actively so that they know that all the townships are doing what they need to do to make sure that flood insurance is available to their residents. And.
And I think the last update that I've seen from the, from the state is, I think there's forty-eight um, policies within Ramsey County that are federally um, backed floodplain policies. Um, flood, flood, uh, flood insurance policies, so um, there's forty-eight of those out within the county, uh, according to what they presented to legislature. Um, so you know, obviously they don't say who they are or exactly, you know, house number kind of thing for privacy reasons, but uh that's the ones that they indicated that are available or active within our county, so we need to make sure that our, our citizens are protected if they've signed up for those, that somebody's you know, properly administering uh that on, on our local level, so.
Yes, um, and we want to make sure that if more than those forty-eight want to gain access to flood insurance, uh, if more than those forty-eight want to, that they can, um, a big part of why I brought up, you know, that the county is going to be putting these together and we want everybody to be a part of the process or at least tell us if they want to be a part of the processes. We want the townships and the residents to be able to have input as we are putting this final draft of the ordinance together so that, you know, the ordinances make sense in our uh specific areas. Uh, there are widely or varying uh types of terrain here in Ramsey County. And so we want everybody to be able to have their own say and so that they can give us the history that they know much better than we do or state or federal interests. Uh, the more input we have from local sources, the better our ordinance will be in.
Right.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on the uh floodplain discussion? Yep. Well, I think as Mr. Hall indicated that, that's something that we're going to have to decide as a commission. Do we make that, continue that with uh floodplain management through the emergency management office? Or is that something that's separate to the planning and zoning board? And um, I think for right now, it, you know, it leaved under the, left under the emergency management. And that's something we'll have to make a decision on as we move forward through the process of completing that ordinance. Anything else? Okay. Uh, next item under unfinished business would be the um hefty rest area project on highway two. Um, so I had sent a email back on the twenty-first of March to Director Hanky and the engineering crew. And uh, the answer that I got back from a Matthew Lindman uh, from North Dakota DOT was, Commissioner Frith, we apologize for the delay in getting back to Ramsey County on this project. We are continuing to work to analyze and reanalyze the intersections for potential turn lanes. Our district engineer Wyatt Hanson will also be reached out uh to discuss this. Uh, developers to make sure that we understand the potential for growth in the area based on the information we finalized. Our anal, an analyst of intersections and get back to you with DOT recommend a recommended improvements. So that is the last I have heard back from them, that was a couple of weeks ago. Twenty-first of March, so we continue to, to ask. So, and so appreciate the reminder of updating. I do think that that project is uh, Mill and Overlay is still going forward east of town this summer. I, I believe so. I don't think they've changed their, their minds on that, so the intersections will be an afterthought. So we'll keep moving on. Any other unfinished business? Not uh move on to new business, uh, approve the abatement list. Somebody's got a copy of the abatement list in the packets. We have motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the abatement list as presented. All further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, approval letter of transfer. Letter of transfer was that was the, the money, wasn't it, for the?
Yes.
Moved to approve.
Second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and approve the letter of transfer. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, raffle permit, we have a raffle permit for Lake Region Sportsman Club.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the uh raffle permit for the Lake Region Sportsman's Club, further discretion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, update on Tyler Technologies and Pictometry. I think the only updates that we have is that uh Pictometry, uh Eagle Vision will be doing flights over the county uh soon. Uh, within probably the next couple of weeks, I'm guessing as far as, you know, as long as you don't get a major snowfall or anything like that, that would you know, compromise the flights over, over the county. And uh, so hopefully that gets completed. Tyler Technologies is still on pace to.
Yes, we, we've been working with them to like start integrating um, information. Um, we are downloading what they're requesting to be put on the server. We have a call with them today, this afternoon, um, to keep moving forward and what needs to be done and what information they need from us to keep it, keep it going, so.
So at what point do you think you'll be uh complete and go? Six months yet?
With Tyler, it probably won't be till next year.
Is there a drop dead date for Dakota programs?
Um, yes, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so we're a year ahead of the game, but that's a good thing.
Yeah, we're we're putting any emails and any requests top priority to not delay things.
Okay.
So Steve, Steve and I have been working, you know, he's been doing most of the server, I've been doing the, you know, some of the information downloading and, you know, yeah. So and then as far as, yeah, like you said, the um pictometry and things like that, that's just, you know, mother nature.
Certain time period when they are able to fly that after snowfall and before trees and vegetation blossom.
Yep.
So, um, if you see flights going over the county crisscrossing kind of thing, that's what they're doing is taking imagery of the landscape, so.
And two, once, once we know of a date or anything like that, I can let you guys know.
Um,
just a point of clarification too, it brought to my attention that one of the assessors is telling townships that they're getting billed for that. And I want to make it perfectly clear that that is not what's happening. We took reserve funds and paid for that, there will be no bill to the townships. Just to clarify what's being said out there, that's not accurate. What's being said out there, that's not accurate.
Yeah. That is not accurate. There's no assessment to the townships on that. Um, one of the things that I was asked at the uh, from the township officers. Was the accounting software that's available through Township Officers Association. Hey, if that is a one-time fee for the entire, all the townships within the county of eighteen hundred dollars, that's something that we could look into. Um, making sure that their financial reporting is complete and accurate and uniformed. Um, for those townships that want to use it. Um, maybe make some of the reporting that they report to the auditor's office. And more uh. Understandable. I think I'm not sure if that's the right word, but. Um. So. Right, so. Hey, and they, it was something that was brought up with the Township Officers Association, that's something that the townships. Um, offer to the townships and uh for a. However, reduced price that their treasures or their clerks can. Uh, do all their financial reporting, very similar to like a QuickBooks or Quicken type of. Of system, but it's designed specifically for townships, I guess, so.
I'll check into it.
We could look into, you know, if it's only eighteen hundred dollars for all townships within the. And the county and makes the reporting easier for them and more readable for. Us, it'd be a good expenditure from the county to help them out on. Now that we acquire it, but um. Okay, anything else on Tyler Technologies or Pictometry? Any other questions? I have nothing further. Visitors and delegations? Brooklyn, you have anything back there? Want to. Uh, want to, want to thank you and welcome you to our community and uh hope everything is going good for you. Appreciate your reporting in the Devil's Lake Journal. Anything else? Portfolios? Commissioner Hodas, anything?
Nope.
Okay, Commissioner Gester?
No, we're just uh. Start of the month, so just the meetings and.
Yeah. Commissioner Wilhelmie?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Bulk, you have anything? Okay. Uh, I as well have nothing, want to get up to that meeting up in uh Edmore this morning, so. I'm gonna boogaloo out of here, so. Um, Ramsey County and Cavalier County Water Boards are having a uh public hearing up there on Ramsey County ten. Uh, the draina, that the assessment project that they're proposing, that's been asked them to. Um, look into and uh, so they're having a public hearing on that this morning and uh. Maybe I'll have Sheriff give me an escort. So, appreciate everybody coming in there, uh, with that meeting adjourned.